Come here and just talk to us a little bit about everything. Give us some good foundational knowledge to help us conduct meetings. And then if we have questions, we can do that. I haven't received any in advance, Miriam, or I would have forwarded them to you. But, um, just really quick, maybe if we could go around and share our names and, um, yeah. And then we'll turn it over to you. Once we do the introduction, we'll start recording.
Okay. You want me to start?
Yeah, sure.
So I'm Miriam Simmons. I live in Beattie Town Township, that way. And, uh, I'm a parliamentarian. I'll give you one again.
It's good enough for me, yeah. Uh, I'm Pete Kelsenberg. I'm the, one of the newest members of the board here.
I'm Annie Pobany. And that's it, right?
And Belinda Lanswell, we met earlier. So we got there.
Hi, here I am. I'm Jennifer Cherry.
Deb Petrie.
And Allison.
I'm Katie Hackett.
And Daisy Rutherford, another new member.
Yeah. Um, so I'm gonna tell him to get going and record and we'll just kind of, it'll be nice and casual.
We'll go, I'm gonna try and stand up and hope this works so that, um, to the extent it's recorded, the people can hear. Okay, um, the first thing is I stole your logo and, um, hoping that's okay, cuz otherwise I'm in really big trouble. Second thing is I really, uh, I'm very grateful for you having me here today, uh, and I know it's difficult time for school boards all over the country. I hear stories from all of my parliamentarian buddies. And so I'm just gonna dive right in to lots of things and I want you to interrupt me and please ask a question and, um, just let's see how this, this will go and hopefully give you some information that'll be helpful. The first thing I was, wanted to ask you, so I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about myself, but I wanted to actually ask you a question. What do you all think a parliamentarian does? Anybody? No idea. So, okay, so Bev, did you have a?
I was just gonna say, I, I think it's probably someone who, um, attends meetings if needed and arbitrates them and also probably informs the public about how Robert's Rules, um, should inform, um, the proper running of a meeting.
There's a lot of that. I spend a lot of my time helping, helping people on bylaws, uh, working on bylaws revisions or bylaws amendments or, or maybe a problem in the bylaws. I am often asked to, um, provide an opinion to somebody who's got some kind of a problem that's happening in their, on their board, um, or in their organization. And sometimes I call that chairs behaving badly and sometimes I call that members behaving badly. But I'm asked to, uh, explain, or I'm asked to explain a situation that they don't, people don't understand. And the reason I got into this was because I wanted to help people have better meetings and just run their organizations a little bit better. So, um, and before I go too much farther on with that, my PhD is in chemistry, which has nothing to do with this. But, um, I was active and still am active in the League of Women Voters and I got involved in planning our conventions. And because of that, we needed to, at a convention, you have to be pretty strict about the rules cuz there's just too many people otherwa- otherwise to do anything else. So I got involved in that and encouraged to study parliamentary procedure. I belong, I'm actually the president of the Minnesota State Association of Parliamentarians, uh, this year and probably next. And that maybe sounds kind of impressive, but there's like fifty-five people. There, uh, I am a professional registered parliamentarian, that's what PRP means. It means I took, uh, a lot of written exams and then three days of oral exams and it's a credential offered by the National Association of Parliamentarians, which is the only organization I've ever joined which required me to take a test before they let, they, you have to test and pass it to enter, to then pay a fee and then be a member. So, you know, there you go. It's perfect for these overachiever type A types, okay? And then I'm also a member of the American Institute of Parliamentarians. And I'm kind of, I'm saying that because, uh, to point out to you that there are other parliamentary authorities besides Robert's Rules. So this is Robert's Rules. This is the parliamentary authority for an awful lot of nonprofits. And this is the parliamentary authority for you guys. The American Institute of Parliamentarians Standard Code is used often in medical and dental associations. It's a little more, uh, to be honest, straightforward. It's a, it's a little more readable. You can kind of tell because it's just not as much stuff. Uh, they have a slightly different philosophy in the book, but it's substant- the rules are substantially the same, so to not scare you. Okay, so, okay. The first thing I did when I got the call from, um, Chair Sherman was to look at your rules. And I would encourage you to do the same. Uh, it's, uh, because you have operate, you, we accept that, you know, you go onto you, onto the School of our School website and you find like, oh, I don't know, five hundred things to read. So I was looking for some, some specific things which really helped. I wanted to point this out to you because it's a, it's a, a mention of Robert's Rules in policy. It's two oh one point three operating norms, rule seven point one zero. And I've added emphasis, the use of Robert's Rules may be suspended at any meeting by a majority vote. This is normally the kind of sentence that gives somebody like me like heart failure. But I then decided, you know, that's not such a bad idea, but I need to tell you what it means. It doesn't mean that you just throw the book out one day. It means that if you need to suspend a rule of order specified by your parliamentary authority, it only requires a majority vote, okay? That's gonna come up someday, it's why I pointed it out to you. So we're going to talk about this a little later. Then the other thing it mentions in two oh three, the operation of school board governing rules. So it, you have rules of order. It says, "Rules of order shall be as follows." Minnesota statutes, of course. Specific rules of order as provided by the school board, blah, 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 and Robert's Rules of Order. It says revised eleventh edition, were not inconsistent, blah, blah, blah. Okay, so actually that language should be current edition of Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised. Uh, on the other hand, if you were trapped in the eleventh edition, this is the twelfth. They get revised about every eleven years, ten, eleven, twelve years or so. And somebody cynically says to me, "Well, they're just trying to sell books." Well, of course they're trying to sell books, but also they need to make some changes. There's a whole lot in this one about electronic meetings. So, uh, which they were really scrambling to get it all in there because the pandemic hit while this was in preparation of almost being printed. So they added a bunch of stuff for that. So I, I just wanted to point that out and then you have rules of order. So, we are actually gonna go through your rules of order. Here's the other thing I would like you to do, yes?
You know, I'm just wondering, isn't this the policy that we just revoked?
Yeah. We've not revoked this clause. Oh, yes, we did, I'm sure.
You revoked the whole thing?
Just at the last meeting, so we're now operating off of the, the one that was previous that she shared, right? It's.
Uh, two oh three, I'm sorry, no, two oh three point one, that one's still there.
It is, okay, good, okay.
The rules of order one.
Okay, so these are, this is elective, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, good, that's.
We've been trying to clean up policies because they're.
No, that's, and it's a tough thing, right? Because the policies grow like topsy really and you just end up with all, okay, but good, okay, we're good on this one.
Yes, we're good on this one.
Because these are pretty straightforward and they track Robert's Rules.
Okay, great.
Almost, almost, no, I don't know, not a hundred percent, but I'm gonna point a couple of things out. So I don't wanna beat you up on this and these are very straightforward rules. But I would encourage you to have a copy of these with you at a meeting. Because there's gonna be some meeting and you go, wait a second, are we supposed to do this or are we supposed to do this? You'll see what I mean in a second. I would, I would, of course, parliamentarian, the chair and the secretary should also always have rules and bylaws and all that stuff with them at every single meeting. You just wouldn't dream of doing otherwise. Okay, "School board members should raise their hands to get recognition of the chair." That's really easy, so we're gonna just like let that one go away. "A motion will be adopted or carried with an affirmative vote of a majority of, of those voting." Good. And you can't make somebody vote, you can't make somebody, you can't make somebody vote. Sometimes somebody wants to abstain. On the other hand, you guys are a school board and there's issues with, uh, that you're supposed to vote. So, anyway, but that's easy to deal with, okay, so we're not gonna belabor that one. "All motions that require a second shall receive a second prior to opening the issue for discussion in the school board." That is completely consistent with Robert's Rules of Order. If a motion that fails to receive a second, blah, 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 the, the, anyway, you don't, if there's no second, you just don't go forward with the motion, okay? Easy, straightforward, okay? Let's go to the next set. "The chair shall decide the order in which school board members," Vivian, sorry.
When he says motions that require a second, how do you know which motions require a second?
So like I am gonna make sure you know that before you leave here. And you'll know why, okay? I promise I'm gonna get that one thing across, it's my life's work. Okay, "The chair shall decide the order in which they will be recognized." Now this is a tough thing for a chair, but generally not so tough in a small, you are a small board. It's not like there's a hundred and twenty-five people out here and people lined up at four different microphones. So this is, the idea is though, that you hear pro and con. So if the chair here, I mean, somebody's raised their hand first or whatever and, and she's heard three people speak pro, it's time to say, okay, do we have anyone speaking on the other side? Well, actually two people speaking pro, right? You, you try to, you try to alternate it. Or if it's pretty clear that everybody's for something, you, you know, you could just stop the whole thing and take the vote and be done. Okay, so that's not, that's pretty straightforward. "The chair shall rule on all questions relating to motions and points of order." A, the chair should roll, rule on all motions and points of order and we're going to talk more about points of order, so I'm leaving that up there. F is, "A ruling by the chair is subject to appeal to the full school board pursuant to Robert's Rules." Appeal, have y'all ever seen an appeal? Right, cuz nobody knows what, most people, most like normal, I say normal people, don't know what one is. You're gonna know what one is by, by the time we're done, okay? It's not anything scary and it's not anything bad and it can actually be a help to the chair. So don't be, don't be scared of that, we're gonna leave that there. "The chair shall have the authority to recognize any member of the audience who wishes to be heard." So they, that, so for you guys, I think this is a very good thing. It's, you don't have to like vote to decide to hear somebody who's, you need to hear from, okay? That's really what that says. Okay, so we're gonna ignore that one and now we're gonna go to the last ones. "The chair has the authority to declare a recess." This is, this is not consistent with Robert's Rules. What you would normally do is vote to have a recess. I think it's very good for this cuz it's a small, it's a small board, you've got a lot going on and she can just, the chair can just say, "We need a comfort break, we need a break to go find something or find somebody, or we need a break cuz it's too noisy," right? And declares a recess without a big deal. So that, I think that's a good one. "The chair shall repeat," I'm gonna take that one away, "the chair shall repeat a motion or a substance of the motion prior to a vote that is standard practice and desired practice in Robert's Rules of Order." Uh, in small groups, you can beat that to death. If you've heard the motion twelve times, you probably don't need to say it again. The idea is that you repeat a motion so that it's absolutely clear what the motion is. And I can tell stories about assemblies who were voting and didn't know what the motion was. And then the minutes are a mess and, and it just doesn't end well, it really doesn't. So the chair is supposed to state the motion very clearly, everybody knows, okay? We're all good with that. "The order in which names will be called, roll call votes," that's pretty straightforward, we're gonna ignore that one. Okay, so let's go, oh, there's more. I thought we were done. "The chair has the same right and responsibility." What that means, in Robert's Rules of Order, if this were a slightly larger board, the chair typically would not vote and would not make her views known, which she would be able to vote on a ballot vote. In a small board, it's a little different and in this it's different cuz it's a school board and you're all supposed to vote, right? You're all supposed to be of record. Okay, "The chair shall announce the result of each vote." Of course she should and it's, it's to make things clear. So let's just get rid of that one. "A majority of voting members of the school board consist, constitutes a quorum." You, of course, would not have a meeting unless you had quorum and nor would any other nonprofit cuz you're just not, that's just not what you do. Actions then are just very problematic and if not null and void, okay? So we're gonna get rid of that one. All right, now, here's your rules for the meeting, basically, and I'm praying nobody's colorblind. I thought, well, there's one guy, now there's two, there's another one back there. Guys tend to be more, are you colorblind? Cuz then I'm in trouble.
I can read all the colors, mother.
So, so, but I just figured the colors look good. The deal is, these are your rules, these are kind of the basic rules, right? "You must obtain the floor." How do you do that here? You raise your hand. At a bigger meeting, you would stand up, real big meeting. You raise your hand. "The chair must recognize you before you speak." "The maker of the motion is allowed to speak fir-" it's generally given preference to speak first. Why? Cuz you wanna know why they made the motion. There's some variation in that, depends on what motion, you know, what you're talking about. It may be a motion you've already beat to death, whatever, so. "Members must take turns." Debate is usually limited to twice per speaker, per motion on the same day. Never more than twice. Never more than twice, okay? That's what causes meetings to go on forever. Now, in a small board, if you were a nonprofit, small board, you could act informally and just have an informal discussion. And what that actually means is you could speak more than twice. That's all it means, informal. You are not informal in this board. You are, you are going by some very formal rules. So I would urge you to adhere to the twice per motion. And what you do not have in your, so this isn't in your rules, but it's, it's definitely, it's very firm in Robert's Rules. And Robert's Rules said, "You, you can speak on a motion no more than twice and only then, only if everyone else who's, who wants to speak has spoken." You can't just keep chiming in because you're, whatever, you can't do that. That's against the rules, it breached the rules. Robert says, and you can tell this is written a long time ago, right? Cuz Robert says, "You can go for ten minutes, you can speak for ten minutes." Which would personally cause me to wanna run out of the room and do anything else. Some organizations set time limits on how long you can speak. Now you have one for your visitors, for your, for folks who are, which is three minutes is fine. Uh, my kinda, my attitude, to be honest, just between us, two, if you can't say it in two minutes, you probably can't say it. So that's just my, that's just my deal. Cuz my, my deal is I'm always trying to get out of that meeting. I'm always trying to, to go home, okay? Limited to twice per speaker, okay? "Remarks must not be personal, offensive, derogatory," cuz you just don't do that. That's not what you do in a meeting, you don't ever do that. Nobody does that, right? Nobody does that. "Debate must be germane to a motion." We're gonna talk about what germane actually means, but it must be germane. Actually, I'll say this right now. So we're talking, and somebody makes a motion about a computer and then somebody else, Pete, Pete's not paying attention, let's say, and says, "Well, Madam Chair, we need to buy sports equipment." It's not germane to purchasing a computer, right? It's complete, it's off topic. And some, and sometimes that's a judgment call of the chair, but that's up to the chair. Okay, "The chair facilitates all this firmly and tactfully." All right, so, I'm going back to your set of rules, your rules of order. There were three things that came up, points of order and appeal. So suspend the rules didn't really come up in your, suspend the rules comes up, uh, in that other section that I showed you first. And I want you to understand what that would involve. And then there's a couple of other things I want you to understand before we conclude this evening. That's move the previous question. It's also called call the question. It's also called, "Can we please end debate?" Cuz I'm tired of listening to this. Okay. And I want a brief word about elections and nominations because I watched your, your meeting on January sixth and there was a question about nominations and requiring a second for nominations. I will, I will tantalize you with this briefly till we get to the answer. All right, and then what is germane? So I'm gonna cover all of this stuff for you today because it isn't actually hard and it's logical. Once you understand it, you go, oh, okay, I get this, I know how to do it. But I need to take a couple of detours. First, if there were just two of us sitting here, would we have a whole pile of rules? No. Why? Because we're just people and we work out a problem and we discover a solution and we go about our business, okay? If you're having an assembly this big, do you need a whole lot of rules? You need a whole lot of rules. Those of us who have ever been to a convention, I've been to a convention of a thousand people. There are, six microphones labeled and they're labeled alternately pro, con, and people get up. No one says a peep unless it's, they are speaking about a motion, okay? You have to keep it formal in a big assembly, otherwise it dissolves, it dissolves into chaos like way, way, way fast, okay? So, uh, after going through, you're, you're a small board, you're fewer than twelve people. And generally you'd have the same rules, you're just less strict about those rules. But the thing is with your rules, you're the school board, you have an overlying, um, obligations under state statute and you've got other stuff going on. So basically, the only thing I can tell that's different about you and a very large assembly is that you get to sit. And I purposely picked an uncomfortable looking chair cuz this does not strike me as the most fun to be sitting here for three hours or four hours at a meeting. I usually at meetings stand in the back of the room cuz I just can't, it just is, it's too hard, okay? So, because you get to sit and the chair gets to sit. Robert's Rules is, it's, and in some ways it's quite, it's quite funny, right? It's like, oh, well, okay, you know, we're gonna like really relax things here and the chair can stand only when addressing somebody, it's like, okay. You guys get to sit and you get to raise a hand, you don't have to stand to address the chair, okay? All right, so I'm gonna go back to the slide, these are all our rules again. I didn't want us to, I don't want us to forget this for a second. These are our rules, but I wanna talk to you specifically about decorum in meetings. And this was very timely, I got, I've got a parliamentary journal of some kind, believe it or not, there are such things, last week, and one of the articles was, "Well, here's the thing. If people don't know what decorum is, they don't know how to maintain it." And I thought, okay, that's a good point. Is we make some assumptions about just common behavior. All right, so I'm going to show you very specifically what Robert's Rules of Order says beyond these meeting rules. It says, "A person has an obligation to obey legitimate orders of the presiding officer." If you are a member of an assembly like this, nonprofit, school board, whatever it is, you have as a member, a duty of obedience, is what it's called. It's obedience to the governing documents. And those governing documents include that you do what the presiding officer says. It includes that you, once, once, uh, you've made a motion and a motion has been discussed and debated and adopted by the, the assembly, you're on board cuz that's what was decided by the group, okay? It's called duty of obedience. In any organization, you have duty of care, duty of loyalty and duty of obedience. To, okay, the other one is to protect decorum. Members are not allowed to carry on discussion directly with one another. That regardless of the size of the assembly, right? We're always doing this and if you're in a board, I've been in a, I've been a board chair for a sixteen-person board and there invariably was, um, side conversations. And so at some point we go, okay, guys, in this case it was the guys, guys, could we just limit the side conversations? And it happens in small boards because people are just having a conversation. Well, it's disruptive, right? Cuz you're listening to them and trying to listen to somebody else and trying to get something talked about. So it's just not one of the deals. It is a breach of order to be talking to somebody next to you and not talking through the chair. It is the job of the chair to protect the assembly from dilatory motions. What's that mean? Dilatory is just somebody's making a motion just to waste time, okay? All I can say is, you know it when you see it. Cuz you just, you try to deal as best you can with chair with every motion or a point of order or point of informa- request of information or whatever, but, uh, honestly, some people can just overdo, okay? And the one last thing is, "Any non-members allowed in the hall during a meeting have no rights with respect to your meeting." They have no rights. So the average nonprofit board would not allow anybody who's a non-member in the room. Or there might be some unusual circumstance in which they were allowed in, but they would not be allowed to say anything. So this is different, obviously, because you are a school board and they, you need to have open, it needs sunshine laws, all that stuff. You, it's fine that people observe, but they honestly are supposed to observe. They are not supposed to interrupt your meeting, cuz it's your meeting. Uh, okay. And I'm giving you the references to this and this will be on, all of this is gonna be on this handout I have so that you can have it for future reference. Then there's decorum in debate. This is called out very specifically, so you're debating a motion. That's just, that was just general decorum. And some of these are, are repetitive, right? Confine remarks to the merits, merits of the pending question. Refrain from attacking a member's motives. Address all remarks through the chair. Can't say that enough and that, and you, you all need that level of formality. So it would be, "Madam Chair, could the treasurer please tell me if this is such and so? Could the, could the chair please, uh, find out from the committee chair of such and so, something I need to know?" The chair is supposed to direct the conversation, okay? You avoid the use, now avoid the use of member names. I almost left this one out because it's perfectly fine, you all call each other director, that's fine. What this really means, you're in a big assembly, it's, it's to avoid me saying, "Hey, Vivian, I don't like what you just said." It's to avoid that kind of, no. You would say, I would say, "I, I, I rise to oppose the, the, I, I rise in opposition to the, to the motion just made by the previous member," blah, blah, blah. You keep it formal, you leave their name out of it. Okay, "Then you refrain from speaking adversely on a prior action not pending." What's that mean? You just had a vote on something, it's done. You don't stand up and complain about it, it's done. If you wanna stand up and complain about it, your, your recourse is to wait to the next meeting and say, "Madam Chair, I move to rescind such and so." You get to the next meeting, it's the next meeting, not this meeting. There are some, there is some recourse during a meeting, it's a long story and we're not gonna go down that road just yet. "Refrain from speaking against your own motion," only because it's kinda like poor form. It's like, well, if you're gonna, it's like, think this through, okay? Read, read from reports and such only with permission of the assembly. You don't just stand up and start reading a paper, you don't ask the chair. "I just wanna read this, you know, this seven-page document." No, uh-uh, you need to vote on that and say, yes, okay, if we must. You're, you are to, now this is of course the old style, be seated during an interruption by the chair. In other words, if the chair says, "Director Kelsenberg, you're supposed to stop talking." And whatever it is she says, you're listening to what she's saying. If you were standing, you would be seated, okay? "You refrain from disturbing the assembly." All right, if, if, if only we could do that, all, all, everybody, all right? So, that's all the decorum I could find. You got the whole story, okay? There's a level of formality, formality and a pattern of. There's a level of formality, formality and a pattern of formality that's quite desirable in a lot of meetings. So the parliamentarians I know all find that meetings go a lot more smoothly when it's treated, you know, when you elevate it a little bit and you don't treat it all like, oh, we're all buddy-buddies and aren't we all friends and isn't this great? Because, right, the chair is not just, is not just, it's not just this person, Allison, it's the chair of the school board, right? It's not just Pete, it's a director of the school board, an elected person, right? It has a stature beyond that of just the person, okay? So where I'm going with this is, when, on any board, you get orientation, you've got all these responsibilities and boy, do you guys ever, it's gotta be, it does, it has to be like drinking out of the fire hose, just looking at the website and the policies. But, this is same way for nonprofits, so, but, so you know that, I'm not gonna go into those, you got those, you got that organized, okay? But, what they tend not to tell you is you also have rights. You have rights as a member of an assembly. So I want you, if you understand these rights, the motions you're gonna make and the reasons, the things that you do start to make a whole lot more sense, okay? So what are your rights? You have a right to participate. You have a right to know what's going on. You have a right to ask that the rules be followed. You have a right to request limits on some rights. And why would you wanna do that? Because, you wanna-
I was just saying, to move things along.
To move things along. So I'm hoping I'll say this more than once, the chair's job is in constant tension between allowing everybody to do what they need to do, to speak enough, to hear the arguments, to flesh out a motion, you know, to fix up a motion how you want it, by amendment, whatever. And her job is to move the meeting along. So I can't say that enough because honestly, in my opinion, this is, I think I'll give this my parliamentary opinion, it's abusive to make people sit through like a four-hour meeting where it's just one delay after another. It's, that is just a very bad thing. It's how nonprofits lose board members and believe me, they do because they won't sit through a bad meeting, they won't. Why would they? Who would? You gotta be, I don't, I don't wanna do that. So you can request limits on some rights and one of those rights is you move the previous question, you end debate. One of those, one of those rights is that you have a lot of time to speak, right? You could limit that as a right. There are some rights you can't limit and we're gonna understand more of that in just one second. Oh, all right, there's one more right, you have a right to be nominated. I was working on a presentation a year ago and I actually wrote a slide and it said, your right to be elected. And I'm like, whoa, whoa, no, you don't actually, you do not have a right to be elected. Because they may not like you and they don't wanna elect you, but you have a right to be nominated. That's the first reason a nomination requires no second. It's your right as a member to be nom, and to nominate yourself, to nominate, a second means he's gotta agree with me that it's okay for me to be nominated. So what if nobody agrees? Which would be horrible, by the way. It's like, oh, no, we're not even gonna let them nominate themselves. So it's a fundamental right, that's why it doesn't require a second. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to that, it'll make more sense by the time we're at the end, okay? So let me expand, let me explain a second about the right to participate. Because it's real specific in Robert's what your rights are, to get notice of meetings. If nobody tells you there's a meeting, uh, that's a pretty bad thing. You're a member of an organization and they hid the notice from you, so you can't even know there's a meeting. It's your right to get a notice, it's a right to make motions, it's a right to debate, it's a right to vote, and it's a right to make nominations. And there's one more right, to give notice of a motion. This is important in some organizations where you have to give notice of a bylaws amendment, for example, in a month in advance. And you wanna do that, okay? So that's very carefully spelled out in Robert's as to the rights of membership. Now, you have an ex officio member. And it was actually not totally clear to me, is Superintendent Linsfeldt a voting member?
No.
No. Okay, I wasn't, I was just lazy, I didn't dig through far enough to find. Ex officio means is a member by virtue of office and sometimes an ex officio member has voting rights and sometimes they don't. Either way, an ex officio member is not counted in the quorum, okay? So they have the, they can show up if they want, kinda deal. All right, you have a right to know, I'm gonna specify a little bit here, you have a right to know what's going on, to understand and correct the minutes. I don't think that's gonna be an issue here because just, I can't see that being a problem here, but believe me, it's a problem elsewhere. You have a right to know what the motion is. If you don't understand, you should always ask the chair, like, what? To discuss one motion at a time and to ask that the rules be followed. Well, you gotta know what the rules are to ask that they be followed, which is why I encourage you to take your Rules of Order with you to your meetings. And how do you deal with that if they're not being followed? You raise a point of order. What else do I have here? I even, I'm, okay. Oh, let me get to this, you can also ask for information, request for information, and you can ask the chair about parliamentary procedure, okay? Point of parliamentary inquiry. All right, debate, discussion, how do you get somebody to stop talking? This is the right to request limits on some rights and I've already mentioned it because you might wanna set time for debate, like, we're gonna talk, we've got 18 things on the agenda, we're gonna spend 10 minutes on item number one. You can do that and you've gotta give yourself some latitude in case you need two more minutes, but you can do that kinda thing. You generally need to do that at the beginning of a meeting. You can set time limits on speaking and again, that's more of a problem in a big assembly. You can ask for an end to debate, move the previous question. Okay, you're asking, so, "Madam Chair, I move that we close debate." Somebody needs to say second. Okay.
Can you do that while someone's talking if you feel like they talk too long?
I'm afraid not. It's very rude to interrupt. There's actually very little, there's very little times you can interrupt, but, you know, so you have to be clever about if they take a deep breath and you think, okay, that's it, and then you zoom in there. Because honestly, people go on. The other thing is, the chair, especially in a small group, the chair can say, "Folks, we're now hearing the arguments again. Don't you think, aren't we not ready to take this to a vote?" That's really kind of asking for the previous question and getting unanimous consent because probably everybody's tired. You know, the problem is, we're in Minnesota and everybody just, they just, they just don't, they just keep going and nobody interrupts and they just, we're all trying to be nice. Honestly, it drives you crazy because you're just sitting in your meeting forever, right? Okay. But anytime you, you're, no, go ahead.
What about if someone's going off topic? Like, if you can't interrupt them, then they can just keep going?
Okay, perfect question. What if somebody's going off topic? Yes, you can, because you're gonna raise a point of order. So I can't emphasize this enough though, folks, it is really, really not the done thing to interrupt somebody, except if there is a breach of the rules. And going off topic is a breach of the rules because now it is not germane to whatever it is you're doing, it's not germane. Madam Chair, this discussion is not, is not germane. The director is talking about sports equipment when we're supposed to be talking about computers. You avoid saying things like, you know, somebody, avoid saying, somebody is saying a terrible thing, just say, "This discussion is not germane," okay? I'm back to this slide because I'm about to go right there. So I told you we'd talk about all this stuff, points of order and appeal and all this, okay? Let's get to, shoot. But first, I have to take another detour. So if you'll bear with me, we're gonna take another detour. Hang on to the thought about points of order. Actually, let me finish my thought about points of order, I'm gonna give you a preview. There's three things you can actually jump up, doesn't matter what's going on, doesn't matter who's talking, the chair is talking, doesn't matter who's talking. You jump up and you yell, "Point of," well, and I'm talking about a big assembly, you would be sitting there, you would go, "Madam Chair," you would, you would say, "Madam Chair, point of order." And she has, she is required to look over at you and go, "Yes, Director Vodova, what is your point?" And you say, "This discussion is not germane," and she says, "Well, your point is well-taken. Director so-and-so should close the discussion," okay? So, but let me emphasize that again, it's really, really rude to ever interrupt anybody. So to make a motion, like, "I move the previous question," while somebody's in a, while somebody's debating, while they're, while they still have the floor, no, can't do that. As soon as they've stopped talking, you can, "Madam Chair, I move the previous question." Hopefully, somebody's gonna say second right away, okay? And I'm gonna say this now before I forget to say it, in a small board where it's real obvious that you, um, let's say you're talking about, you're talking about any kind of motion, somebody's brought up a motion. So let's say Director Hawker makes a motion and immediately, I'm picking on Pete.
Sure, I'll take it.
Director Kelsenberg says, "You know, yes, that's such a great idea and we need to blah, blah, blah." Okay, that is in the nature of a second. Actually, there's nothing sacred about the word second, it's that, right? All a second means is that more than one person wants to talk about it, that's all it means. So in small boards, that tends to happen where somebody just chimes in all of a sudden. It even happens in big assemblies. And then I've had, there's people in big assemblies who are like, "Well, nobody made a second and so we have to, like, we can't do this motion." It's like, they're talking about it. The second is irrelevant after everybody's, after you've got two, more than two people talking, two or more people talking about it, okay? So don't, so don't, there's no sacred words in here and according to one of their, one of the authors who I saw in November at a conference, he said, "This is not the Da Vinci Code. There are no hidden secrets in here either." It's very helpful, yes.
When making a motion, or, so making a motion, you generally don't wanna speak against the motion. If you make a second, is it okay to speak against the motion? Like, you might wanna-
Absolutely.
-second just to have the conversation?
It's exactly right. It just means you think it's worth being discussed. A second doesn't mean you like it even, it doesn't mean you think it's a great idea but you're thinking, well, we better talk about this. So yeah, okay, yes.
Would it matter then in the minutes? Because usually the minutes says who made the first, who made the second, but if you had the, kind of the vague second, would you just say, "Motion by"?
I saw that in your rules, I think so. Just say, just say the motion and, and that, it causes trouble for your clerk, right? So maybe don't do that. Or you can say, or the chair can make sure that that second's very clear. So to be, to be clear also in Robert's, they don't care who makes the second, just, but so, I, from a, from a standpoint of the school, school board rules, that's, you need to do that, so. But I'm just saying, that's what a second means. So when you see that, okay. I need to take a slight diversion into making and debating a motion because some things don't make sense if you don't know this. So let's say you're sitting in a meeting, somebody makes a motion, somebody says, "Second," right? Somebody's made a motion, Pete's made a motion, "Second." The chair says, "It is moved and seconded to do such and so." And immediately, a hand goes up, Director Vodova says, "I move to amend that by striking 500 and putting in $2,000." And somebody says, "Second." And the chair says, "It is moved and seconded to amend by striking 500 and putting 2,000." And immediately, somebody says, "Madam Chair, we don't know anything right now, I move that this go to a committee and they can tell us later." And somebody says, "Second." And the chair says, "It is moved and seconded to send this motion to a committee and have them tell us later." And then immediately, somebody says, this happens in big assemblies, it won't happen here, you'll get a couple. Immediately though, somebody goes, "Madam Chair, I think this should be postponed until next meeting because we don't know anything." Second. Chair says, "It is moved and seconded to postpone this question until our next meeting." And then immediately, Director Vodova goes, "I moved the previous question." And somebody says, "Second." And the chair says, "The previous question, it is moved and seconded to order the previous question, which means we need to stop debate." And okay, now, if you're not confused, my point of doing all this is, how does she know which motion to take first?
You have to unwind them from the end?
You have to unwind, you, there is an order, there is a rank of motions, there is an order of precedence. We call it precedence, parliamentarians call it precedence, I don't know why they just do, it looks like precedent. So let's, let's make it a little simpler and let's, let's pretend we had this, we have a motion on the floor, it is moved and seconded, blah, blah, blah. Somebody's made an amendment, it's moved, the amendment's on the floor. And then, somebody moves the previous question. So I'm gonna ask you, how do you know to handle closing debate right then? Why is that, why can't you just keep going and talking about the amendment?
You don't know what the previous question you're referring to?
Actually, it is odd language, it just means whatever question's on the floor, right? But I mean, how does she know that that's what we're doing? We're gonna, okay, well, then we're gonna close debate and take the vote, that's really what that means. There's a rank. And I'm not even giving you the complete list because there's a couple of obscure ones I've never seen anybody use but parliamentarians, so I'm not torturing with those. But here's the deal, there's an order of precedence, we call it. If it makes you happy, call it precedence or call it rank, doesn't matter. The rank is, the main motion is the lowest-ranking motion. So you talk about that until something else happens like amended. When you amend it, you're talking about the amendment. And until you conclude the discussion about the amendment and take the vote on the amendment, that's what you're talking about. Then you go back to the main motion, you take the vote on the main motion. If someone's made a motion to refer it to committee, that takes precedence over these other ones. If someone's moved to postpone it, that takes precedence over those. And when somebody moves to end debate, that takes precedence over all of them. Now, actually, what would happen, because I, in a way, I've given what you, the motion would be, "Madam Chair, I move the previous question on all pending questions." And she would take them in order. So if the motion on postponing to the next meeting prevailed, if you all voted yes, that's the end of the story, boom, it's postponed to the next meeting, you're done. If that motion, everybody votes no, or more than half of you vote no, then she moves to referring it to committee and takes a vote on that motion, on down the line. Yes.
But isn't referring it to a committee also postponing it?
No. No, it mean, no, because a committee means you'd actually, the motion would include things like, "A committee of three should study this and report to us on February 20th," blah, blah, blah. A postpone just means we're gonna take up the motion at the next meeting and discuss it at the next meeting, okay? And you can get all kinds of really complicated situations, but you know, most people don't, right? Viv?
Can you have more than one amendment active at one time?
Yes, and it's very confusing. So let's say this, "I move to buy a computer for $500." First Amendment, strike 500 and insert 2,000. I can amend- I can amend one time that amendment, strike two thousand and put in twenty-five hundred. And the rule is that way, because it's too, so confusing, if you try to amend amendments too much, you will all, like, go wugga, wugga.
So you could...
So you can do it once, you can amend.
But you could only, you can amend the amendment once, but can you offer an additional amendment? Or is there only just one amendment on the floor at a time?
There's only, there should only be one on the floor at a time. So now, and that, my, my example was a primary amendment, strike five hundred, two thousand. A secondary amendment, strike two thousand, put in twenty-five hundred. You need to stop there and dispatch that amendment. You could then go, let's say, now you've amended it, and it's twenty-five hundred. Somebody could still raise a hand and go, I move to amend by striking twenty-five hundred and putting in three thousand.
Is there such a thing as, like, when you have an amendment, that if it changes the, the motion too much, that it's, or, you know, changes the intent of the main motion? Is that okay, or?
It can be okay, yes. It can be okay. There's some specific rules about that, and, um, uh, that I won't get into, maybe right now. Cause it would confuse even me.
Okay.
Like, can you change, such and so should be this, to such and so should not be this? Actually, you can do that.
As an amendment, and then you'd have to vote on it?
And, yeah. Let's hope it doesn't happen, because that's, you know, things are pretty bad when that happens, to be honest.
Right.
Yeah, you can do that. There's some complicating issues there. So I wanted you to understand order of precedence or rank, because these things come up. So here's the whole, here's the big, the big deal. The top ranking motion is actually fix the time to which to adjourn. Nobody uses that, so we're gonna just go with adjourn, okay? Adjourn is the top motion. It's the highest ranking motion. So, you're in the middle of your discussion on your secondary amendment, and everybody's tired. Director Kelsenberg says, Madam Chair, I move to adjourn. Second. She's required then to take a vote on adjourn, even though there's a, there's this motion and all these amendments floating around on the floor, okay? Recession is a high ranking amendment, uh, ranking motion, and in your case, the chair says, we're gonna take recess, buy gum, you're gonna take a recess, so that's taken care of. And I put these in here, raise a question of privilege is something like, Madam Chair, you can interrupt if it's necessary. You try not to, but if necessary. Madam Chair, I can't hear a thing. Cause it's Madam Chair's job to make sure you can hear something, okay? And call for the orders of the day is a kind of an archaic way of saying, Madam Chair, we are so off the agenda. We are off the agenda, can't we please get back on the agenda? That's really what that means. But it's a high ranking motion. You can interrupt somebody to say, we're off the agenda. Can we please get back to it? At which point, everybody looks abashed and they go back to the agenda. Unless you're in a huge hall, and you've actually gotten off topic, and it's clear they, the, the assembly wants to discuss something else, then you might take a vote, okay? Doesn't happen with small assemblies, okay? Then, this, there's my other ones, okay? Move the previous question, postpone, send to committee, that's the rank, okay? And again, I left out a couple, cause it's, it's just more than normal people need to know. But, it is in the book. It is in this book. Should you feel like learning more, this little book costs seven dollars and fifty cents. Roberts Rules of Order in Brief. It's not actually the rules, but it summarizes the rules, and it makes you understand, there's little scripts in here of what to say. So it's very handy. There's also Roberts Rules for Dummies, I'm gonna forget to say this, yes?
We have copies at the district office of that book, so if you do not have a copy, please let us know and we'll get you one.
Very handy. And honestly, really, truly, most people don't need all this, they just really don't. I just did because I took the, all these exams. All right. So I needed to under, I needed to understand this, so at what point, okay, as soon as the main motion is on the floor, nobody has to have said anything about it, the, hopefully, the maker of the motion has had a chance to say, this is such a great idea, this is better than chocolate ice cream, and we really need to do it. Then, at some point, you, at that, at any point after the motion is on the floor, Director Vodova could say, I move to amend it. I move, we postpone it till next week. You can make a motion as soon as it's on the floor. It's, and again, it's on the floor as soon as the chair has stated it, okay? And then you're off to the races, okay? So now, here's where I'm getting back to the interesting stuff. All by myself, I call this, I have a little parliamentary lesson, I called it all by myself. Cause there's a few motions you can make all by yourself. Don't need a second, that's what I mean, right? Nobody has to agree with me, nobody has to say it's okay. You may have seen one of these in a really big assembly where you, 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 uh, the chair takes a vote, and you're thinking, and I, and I, no, you hear I, and all the noes yell really loud, cause they always do. And you're sitting in the back room, and you go, what? I can't tell who, what? You jump up and you yell, division, that, one person can do that, you don't need a second. And it's said, and it's a demand for a standing vote. Because you need to see the vote. It's never gonna happen in a small thing like this, right? You can see everybody. The, the things you wanna do, the things you can do all by, all by yourself, and in, in, in very, and in some circumstances, you can't interrupt. Here they are. Points of order, request for information, parliamentary inquiry, and make a nomination, okay? Any breach of the rule, I cannot emphasize this enough. I hel, I, I was, I was sort of hired by, uh, a few people to go with them to a meeting. This is like, three years ago, I don't know. It was the coldest imaginable night. And the wind is like thirty miles an hour, and I'm thinking, why me? So I went, I went, I go to this meeting because the chair refused to follow procedure. She refused. She refused to take nominations from the floor. She, she ignored legitimate requests from the audience. I mean, she just, I was, I was like at the end of my rope, and I'm like, okay, guys, here's your recourse. The only thing you can do is, I mean, it would've been me, I would've ju, I, it wouldn't be me, right? Cause I was not a member, I'm just advising them. I would have leapt out of my chair with my hand in the air and then yelling, point of order. Couldn't get him to do it. So it was all downhill from there. Cause, believe me, it didn't improve, her behavior did not improve. She had this, and this was what killed me, she had Roberts Rules sitting right there. She had her drink on it. And I thought, okay, that's great. So maybe by osmosis or something, you know, she, we were gonna like, we were gonna like, follow the rules, like a fundamental fairness kinda rule, that was what was so disturbing. It was just so unfair. People don't deal well when things seem unfair, okay? Anyway, so point of order, and I mean, boom, up out of your chair, boom, point of order, Madam Chair, no ambiguity there. There is a breach of the rules. So, a parliamentary, a request for information occasionally can warrant an interruption. Just be judicious on that. Parliamentary inquiry is the kinda thing where you say, Madam Chair, is now a good time to make an amendment? I mean, just say you just don't know. Or would an amendment be in order, you know, would an amendment directed to such and so be in order? I mean, she's supposed to help you, right? She's supposed to, she's supposed to help you. Okay, and nominations, again, cause you can do that by yourself, you can make a nomination by yourself. So, what is a point of order for a breach of the rules? I'm gonna give you some examples. The chair forgets to take a vote on a main motion. I've seen all these, I'm gonna give you a bunch. Why? By the way, folks, though she looks dead calm all the time, I told her she must have lots of little kids running around, cause she's very calm, you know? There is a whole lot going on when you're chair. There's, there's a whole, you, she's worrying about the time, she's worrying about, did I get this person to speak? Did I, did I do this right thing in order? Did I state the motion correctly? There's just a lot going on. So to the extent you can help the chair, you help the chair, right? And, so, I've seen that happen, forgot, we talked about the amendment and then forgot to take the, uh, the vote on the main motion. Not a good deal when you need it in the record. She forgot to take the vote on the amendment, cause everybody seemed like, oh, yeah, I love this amendment. Well, we never actually voted on it. Someone speaking out of order. It's very hard to keep track of this by yourself in a big assembly, that's why they have a parliamentarian, a chair, and a secretary, all sitting there. And believe it or not, what we're doing is, we're looking to see, this person spoke already, so they can't get a turn. And they're actually, there's somebody up there taking names and doing that, that's what they're doing. A person's reading a paper without permission of the assembly, they stood up and started reading. Things are taken out of order when you've agreed upon the agenda, then you should stick with the agenda. It's fine to say, we need to move an agenda item because superintendent, the superintendent has to leave, or because such and so's happened, or because something. All right, what's an appeal? And why would you, why would you do this? I appeal the decision of the chair. Why would you do this? Cause you don't like her, and you wanna make life difficult? No, that's not it, actually, that's not it at all. Let's say this. We got our motion to buy the computer, Director Kelsenberg says, yes, and we need some sporting equipment. And the chair says, why, that's great, however, that is really not germane to this motion, because we're talking about the computer. And he says, well... And that's that, right? And you say, well, I appeal the decision of the chair. You need to have a friend. Somebody, somebody needs to go, yeah, that's right, man, you are spot on. Cause you cannot just disrupt the meeting by yours, that's the theory, right? You can't just have one person going, making the life of the chair miserable. You need to have somebody say, second. In which case, the chair says, okay, thank you so much. My ruling is because sporting equipment has nothing to do with a computer, and not only that, it's taken out of a different fund. So it would be better to have a separate motion. And then he says, no, it isn't. And then the chair gets to go, yes, it is, and that's it, then you take a vote. Now, sometimes the chair, just like, the chair can make a ruling, and like, the chair maybe doesn't know, right? Or the, she, she's thinking, hmm, this seems kind of on the borderline. So, that's fine, it's actually fine to appeal, it's not, not gonna hurt her feelings, but, uh, it is a process you go through, right? Somebody needs to say second, and that's it. You have one chance to speak, she has two, and you take the vote. And she would say, okay, uh, is the decision of, the decision of the chair is that this motion, um, this motion is not germane, does the assembly sustain the decision of the chair? Majority vote, yes or no? You take the vote. If they vote yes, it's sustained, you just go on. If they vote no, then you add your sporting equipment to the computer motion. Viv?
So I have a question about the germaneness. So if a director, not the board chair, wanted to raise a point of order, um, that the discussion was not germane, um, are you supposed to explain yourself at that point? Or, or does the board chair just make a determination on it without an explanation, and the explanation could come later?
No, that, that's a very good question, and yes, what you should do is say, Madam Chair, so Director Vodova says, Madam Chair, point of order, this discussion is not germane. And then probably look to her for some little bit of explanation. What do you mean exactly, right? It's not germane because it has to do with sporting equipment, and perhaps Director Kelsenberg didn't realize that it comes from a whole different fund, and so we have to talk about it separately. That'd be fine to say, okay?
Do you have any of those rules, like personal attacks, or reading the document, or, you know?
Any of those rules? I'm trying to think, most of the time, when I've, when I've done it in an assembly, I'm, Madam Chair, it should've been a two-thirds vote, and you took a majority vote, that's really bad, you, cause you want the two-thirds. And, uh, Madam Chair, such and so was not recognized at the con, there's someone at a con microphone needs to be recognized, something like that, yeah, and, uh, yes. And any kind of bad behavior should be called to order, it absolutely should. It would actually help the chair, to be honest with you, any kind of bad behavior, then it's not like, it's not looking like it's her by herself calling this out. Madam Chair, this is inappropriate, um, inappropriate language. Sorry to say. Okay. So, but you need a second if you're gonna appeal the decision of the chair. The chair is, so again, the chair's intent, it's intention, right? The chair's trying to get you out of here in a reasonable amount of time and get things done without having confusing motions talking about sporting goods that we really don't need. Okay? All right, so, all right. Why would you do it? A chair can ask the assembly, the best chairs I've ever seen, one of the best chairs I've ever saw, this was a huge assembly, we're a thousand people. There was a ruling by the chair that something was not amendable, and it was a bylaws thing. And I was in the middle of it, it's a long story. But anyway, we had fun, sorta, kinda, except she ruled it was not, an amendment was not in order, and then we immediately took a recess. So I'm up at the front of the room along with a couple other people, and I'm like, this is within the scope of notice, and it's allowed to have, uh, we're allowed to have an amendment, we can make the amendment, blah, 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 and I'm, I'm, I'm hammering on the parliamentarian. Okay, we recon, we reconvene. The chair starts out by saying, folks, I made an error. This motion is amendable for the following reasons. Okay, it was the best thing she possibly could've done, cause one thing, it calmed everybody down, and then we made an amendment, and it was successful. I mean, it, it was adopted, so, went through. So, everybody was much happier that way. And the chair was basically saying, okay, I, I understand now, this is the deal. The other thing is, a chair can do this, it can say, you know, folks, I'm thinking this is not germane. What do you think? Those who think it's germane, raise your hand. Those who don't raise, you see what I'm saying? You just ask the group, what is the best thing to do? It's a very good way to, and sometimes you just, you just don't, you, you just can't tell. It's better to ask the assembly, right? Uh, it's much better to ask the assembly, okay? So, so I, oh, I had some more examples, sorry. A chair has ruled an amendment out of order, or ruled the two-thirds, required, took a majority vote and they needed two-thirds, or ruled something not germane. Germane, and a, for example, an amendment cannot, can be not germane, as we mentioned, okay? You're trying to put in sporting equipment. The discussion could be, if the discussion is off topic, you should really truncate that discussion, because it's just off topic. Frankly, I don't, I haven't seen much of that, I've seen non-germane amendments, but not so much, um, not so much discussion. I don't know. It's a, it's a judgment call on that one. It's supposed to be relevant to the motion in front of you. Okay, I wanna talk about suspend the rule, we're almost done, suspend the rules. Okay. Why would you suspend the rules? And does that sound scary? It sounds scary to me. Anybody know why you'd suspend the rules?
Sure, if you have to read a long document, and everybody has already knows that document, you suspend the rules just to avoid the length of time it takes.
You could do that, right?
I saw that before, so...
Yeah, uh-huh, okay, all right. You could, um, so some, sometimes what happens, here's where I've seen it the most happen. Madam Chair, I move to suspend the rules and introduce a courtesy resolution. So, so it's generally a larger assembly, sus, the, you never say what rule you're suspending, so everybody's left with, like, what? Which is kinda funny. The ruler, the rule that's talking about is, we're, I'm, I'm asking to suspend the rule, in other words, the agenda that we adopted, and interrupt that agenda by introducing a resolution not on the agenda, to honor a past president. I've seen that happen. I was called in for an opinion, uh, by somebody who had, uh, the, they had had an election, and they didn't like the way it turned out, I cannot make this stuff up. Didn't like the way it turned out, so, they want, somebody, the chair was talking to me, she says, okay, I think they're gonna want to suspend the rules and do the election over. And I'm like, okay, you cannot do that. There is no rule to suspend and do the election over. The people had been notified, the ballots had been counted, the people had been notified and accepted office, there's nothing to suspend. But she was worried about some kind of deal there. So threatening to suspend the rules, they've gotta be suspendable, for one thing, and they've gotta be something that has to do... they've got to be something that has to do with a rule of order. So, it's a rule of procedure within the meeting. So for example, you could suspend the rule that has to, that has to have pro-con, pro-con. For some reason, I don't know, would depend on the situation, right? I could suspend a rule that, that we're gonna raise our hands. I don't know. And put a hat on or something. I don't, I mean, just make something up.
So it doesn't happen often?
It doesn't happen often. Again, you see it in bigger assemblies, and, uh, it's just the, it just doesn't happen very, now, the thing for you guys to know, though, you can't suspend, for anybody to know, you can't suspend any fundamental right. You can't say, "I moved to suspend the ro, rules and prevent a Director Vodova from having a vote." It's a fundamental right to vote. "I moved to suspend the rules and not tell anybody we're having a meeting." Oh, no, 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 no. You can't, it's fundamental rights, right? But, you guys, this is why I pointed this out before. This policy, 201.3 in operating norms, "The use of Robert's Rules may be suspended by a majority vote." So what I'm taking that to mean is, when, if somebody moves to suspend the rules, a majority vote will suffice to suspend the rules. So in my handout, I have an example of, it's not much of a handout, but I'm hoping it's powerful. So, he's looking worried. Yes?
You say, "To suspend the rules." Shouldn't it be to suspend a rule, a particular rule?
I know, yes, I know.
Sorry.
It, it is, it's, it is, you're right. But it's the arcane, it's kind of an arcane language that they use in here.
Oh, it's just the way it's written.
Suspend the rules, and they're very clear. It's, I don't have to say what rule I'm talking about. You just say, "I moved to suspend the rules and do such-and-so," and, I don't know, assume everybody knows what you're talking about. So in a way, it's a little bit funny. But, majority vote for you guys. So you would want to remember that, because that's in your operating norms. Vivian?
Um, if you wanted to add something to the agenda, is that how you do it? Have to suspend?
You could do that.
At the beginning of the meeting, how do you add things to the agenda?
So, if you wanted to add something to agenda, would you need to suspend the rules? So I confess, I have not watched the very beginning where you have adopted your agenda. Typically, you come-
And there's a policy on how to get things on the agenda, starting with talking to the chair before the meeting and that sort of thing. So, I can send that to, um, to Vivian.
Yeah, so there's a policy for getting them on before you get to the meeting, but is there any circumstance where you would be allowed to add something to the agenda?
I think we, there's been, you can make a motion to amend the agenda.
Yeah.
And add some.
Yeah, you'd probably just make a motion to amend, rather than, than go through all that baloney. But it might come up. One, one, my, my, I gave you a Gordian knot example of, let's say, you have a motion on the floor, and an amendment, and a secondary amendment, and then somebody's talking about something else, and you're all going, "Woga, woga, I don't know what this is." You could say, "Madam Chair, could we suspend the rules? Those rules being that you need to take one motion and deal with in one amendment. Could you just tell me what you think the, the motion is, and we go from there?" You know? Small enough group, that would work, okay? You could do that. Okay, and then calling the question, we've, we've kind of, I've kind of beat you up with this. It's a request in debate, it's a fundamental right, and that's why you need it, had to have a second. And again, a second is just an agreement, that we should talk, we should do something. We should get this motion on the floor, okay? Every time I've done, moved the previous question, this is generally at a, when I've had a chance to do this, at a convention of about a hundred and twenty-five people, and we beat this question to death, people are lining up to move the previous question. And, you can conclude an argument. "Madam Chair, I'm speaking against this motion, because I really don't think we need to buy a computer at all, much less spend twenty-five hundred dollars, and I moved the previous question. I call the question."
And that requires two-thirds? Well, is that what I'm reading there, that?
Correct, that's a two-thirds vote. That's a two-thirds vote. Again, because you're suspending, you're stopping a fundamental right.
Okay.
The right to debate. Honestly, usually what I see, everybody's so tired of hearing it, but you're, they're so ready.
Yeah.
So, all right, what if, oh, okay, my one last deal. Elections and nominations. So, here's the thing, here's the thing with elections. You have to have, on January 6th, you had to have an election, right? It was the new year, and you had to have an election. Nobody made a motion that said, "I move we have an election." Did they? No. Because you had to have an election. So there's actually a motion on the floor that you don't even, nobody has said, nobody has stated it, it's, it's called an assumed motion, which is, we're having an election. Now the question is, and this is the other reason nominations don't require a second, the question is, who are we going to elect? That's why I don't need any second for nominations. I just need some names to put on this list of who we are going to elect. So no second is required to make a nomination. What else do I have here? There you go. Second reason a nomination requires no second. People get themselves all tied up in this, but it's, uh, if you think about it, it's kind of improper. And, and it feels weird. So I've been on a lot of boards, it was the time to elect officers. And, it's like, okay, now what do we do? So somebody's like, "Well, you need to nominate somebody," and then somebody needs to say, "Second." I'm like, "No, you don't. Just nominate somebody." And, and it's a custom in some places, it's not a Robert's Rules thing. Are there any further nominations? You just ask once. You don't need to ask more than once. It would be best to say, "Are there any further nominations for the, a position of chair?" Seeing none, nominations are closed. Okay? Because then that's, you're formally, now we're done, now we can take the election, we can do the election. That'd be the best, and just make it clear which, which thing you're, you're asking for nominations for. Are there any further nominations for, for vice-chair, or for clerk, or for sec, whatever it is, right? Treasurer, whatever.
But you don't have to ask three times?
You don't. And again, that's an, uh, somebody explained to me that's probably from a, you do not have to ask three times, that's a, um, that's from union practice, but I don't know that for sure. And, uh, there are other parliamentary Mason's Manual and Demeter's Manual, there, it could be in there, and I've just been too lazy to look it up.
Isn't that what we get from MSBA?
I'm sorry.
I was just wondering. I, I was just trying to remember where we got that exactly, and I thought that we, that that's something that appears in, in our advice that we get from MSBA. Joan, do you recall anything like that?
Say that again, sorry.
Do that, um, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any? Isn't that something that we get from MSBA as advice on how to do this?
Right.
So I wonder where they get it.
And it's followed by the nine, the nine-sixteen board as well. They do the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that means they're probably following, that's, and it's fine, it doesn't hurt anything, but it's just like, it's not strictly speaking necessary, and they, he doesn't, it's not in there, he doesn't require that. Just, are there any, are there any further nominations? So, all right. Uh, let's see. I think I'm, I think, I do have one funny story, though. Does anybody like old movies besides me, and then, because I'm almost done?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm in old movies. The Man Who Shot Liberty Balance, has anybody seen that movie?
No.
The Man Who Shot Liberty Val, Balance, okay? Come on, James Stewart, John Wayne's in that movie. It's a John Wayne movie, you have to see John Wayne movies, okay? It's great, right? Okay, so anyway, there's a scene where the bad guy, the bad guy's Lee Marvin, he's just really, only he's dead by now. And his toady, played by Struthers Martin, one of the best character actors like, on the planet, he was awesome, right? He was, did movies with Paul Newman and John Wayne and all kinds of people. Anyway, Struthers Martin, who would have been as this, you know, this criminal helper to the bad guy, would have probably been illiterate and just, just, right, wouldn't have known anything. Okay, there's a scene toward the end where he's standing in the back of a meeting hall, and he yells, "I move that the nominations be closed." I think it's one of the funniest things I've ever seen in a movie. I want you to look for that. And if you haven't seen The Man Who Shot Liberty Balance, well, shame on you, because you need to go-
I'm making a note right now.
Right now. All the good movies were made prior to nineteen sixty, you know?
Parliamentarian humor, I guess, right?
I know, I know, I'm, I would love to find a clip of that, but I would be violating some copyright somewhere, so I don't do that. All right, that's it. End with something happy, there's a puppy.
Oh, cute.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, questions, anyone? Thank you so much, this is really helpful.
Where does Robert's Rules come from? Which came first, the parliamentarian or the, or the Robert's Rules?
So, Henry Martin Robert was a, was an army, I think he was a general by the time he was, so he was a learned man, right? And he's, he's visiting a town, and I don't remember which town, it's probably in here in the preface, he's visiting a town, and they need to have a meeting about the, um, it had a bay, it had, it had, they needed to talk about, uh, protection of this bay, like gun, gun emplacements and stuff like that, okay? So he's asked to lead this meeting. And he didn't really know anything, but he felt like it was his, he felt it was his duty to say to these people, "Oh, okay, this is eighteen ninety," or whatever it was. And he really didn't know anything much about running a meeting. The meeting lasted, what would be a really long time for a meeting? What do you think?
Four hours or?
Fourteen hours later. I'm often wondering, did they eat during that? I don't know. Did somebody bring in some food? I have no, I don't, because I'm, it's all, I'm always about my stomach, right? So, after that, he was like, "I'm never gonna suffer this humiliation again, I am going to figure out what the rules are." Well, there were rules, I mean, there are a lot of them are, have the origin with Thomas Jefferson, in fact, which is origins in British common law. And so he developed a little booklet of rules as a result of that. That's where it started. And at the time, all over the country, you'd go to a meeting, well, they all had different rules. So, they'd all spend hours, what did they do for fourteen hours? They argued about the rules. That's what they did, right? They didn't have a rule book, a common rule book, so that's how it started. And then, it's been in their family, Henry Martin, Henry M. Robert III just died last year, the grandson of Henry M. Robert, and, uh, he was in his nineties. And, uh, there's a team of people who revise this and accept notes for revision and make it better and try to make it clearer and things like that, so, um, yeah. So that's how it happened. Yeah, because if you were in St. Louis versus Kansas City, it had different rules for-
So, this works if you're in an organization where there's a sergeant-at-arms and someone's like, out of order, and then they get booted, right?
Right.
But it doesn't necessarily work if someone just decides not to follow the rules and you don't have that.
Right.
So what do you do then?
Okay, so you do have recourse against, you have recourse for a member who does not re, conform to the rules, right? The problem, you guys, is you have non-members who are not conforming to any rules, or any conceptum decorum, or any concepts of civilization, or whatever. I mean, if they're just hollering throughout your meeting, it's just so totally out there that, you know, so far, everybody's like, "I don't know," because it's just, it's just like, the worst. So if a member misbehaves, they can be sanctioned by the group. It's like, okay, if you're gonna continue, if you're gonna misbehave, then you cannot speak, right?
Can you not, I mean, that's one of the fundamental rights, that they can speak.
That's right. So you'd have, you'd actually have to, we'd actually have to have a whole nother meeting on what it is you could do exactly. But there has to be some, again, you've, if, if, it's so bad for some one person on a nonprofit, that, this is, I've seen it on nonprofit boards, right? Where if, if something really bad happens, well, then your, your, your option is, well, then you resign, right? Something is, you can't agree on anything, and you can't, you can't agree to anything the board agrees to, then really, you should leave, because you're, you're not, you're doing your duty to the organization. You're not doing what you're supposed to do to keep the organization alive and healthy. So...
And I think part of why I brought you in with Miriam, and thank you, because this is so helpful, is just to, because it's not rules that you deal with every day. And so I, I'm hoping that this board, and then future boards with the recording, can look at it and say, you know, have a little bit more of a grounding in how business meetings are run, and, um, I think it will be helpful for everyone.
Because I have watched your meetings, I think you have a pattern of formality that's quite good. I didn't really find anything to critique, except the people hollering from out there, and I don't know what, I don't know if it would help for the chair to stand up. I am wondering, to be honest, if it would help to move down that way. And move you closer to the, um, entrance. Uh, because this, you know, this, because they can get threatening, and this is like, not a good deal.
Well, thank you. I mean, I, thank you for, for all of the information, and-
Well, I am grateful to all of you for being on the school, did I say I don't have children, and I've never have had children in the district?